Welcome to the DeKalb Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for this Monday, September 16th, 2024. Could we start with a roll call, please?
Becker?
Here.
O'Flaherty?
Here.
Penny Graham?
Here.
Wright? McMahon? Chair Maxwell?
Here.
Coram President.
Thank you very much. We'll move to the approval of the agenda. If there are any additions or deletions, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by O'Flaherty. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Becker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We'll go to the approval of the minutes from August 19th, 2024. Again, if there are any additions or deletions or changes, if not, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Penny Graham. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Becker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. This is the public participation portion. If there's anyone that is, would like to speak to something that is not on the agenda for this evening, you can step forward now. If not, we will move to new business. We have two pieces of business this evening. The first is a public hearing, a petition by the City of DeKalb for approval of the rezoning of the subject site at 2100 Pleasant Street, southeast corner of Peace Road and Pleasant Street, from the HI Heavy Industrial District to the GC General Commercial District. And we have a staff presentation?
Yes, this is a City of DeKalb petition requesting to rezone a three-acre property, southeast corner of Peace Road and Pleasant Street. You can see it on the aerial here, close to the airport. It's currently zoned heavy industrial, as is most of the area in that vicinity. We'd like to rezone that to general commercial district. The comp plan that we approved in 2022 does show commercial for that. The site is right here. The red is a commercial, the purple is industrial. But we also have commercial across the street in the existing commercial area that has a variety of uses, offices, some retail service uses. So comp plan called for that. The zoning, mostly industrial. It's planned development industrial across the street with a variety of uses. So we think it fits in with the general commercial. Also, in the UDO, the general commercial, the intent of that district is to be located in areas adjacent to arterial streets, and it's designed to accommodate a wide range of retail and service needs, which in that area certainly is needed. We believe the rezoning will not have a detrimental effect on the surrounding area, meets all the criteria for rezoning, will be a catalyst for further development along Peace and Pleasant Road. There's adequate utilities in that area in terms of water, sanitary. There's a few images, street view of the site. That's from Peace Road. That's from Pleasant Street looking at the site. And the roadway, there's plenty of frontage on Pleasant Street to provide a future access. Any future access will be moved further, definitely further east from the intersection, perhaps line up here across from this commercial development, or there could be a couple. Access on Peace Road is probably not likely going down in the future. But the criteria for rezoning is there, spelled out. I believe it meets all the criteria. We did receive one public response, an email from Lucas Ray. He's the CFO of DeKalb Forge along Pleasant Street. Mr. Ray indicated support for the proposal but didn't want to see a cannabis dispensary there. We responded back saying there's no intention of locating a dispensary there. We already have two in the city, and it's unlikely to be another one at this point. So that's all the comments we did receive. Bill wanted to go a little background on the city's interest in kind of marketing this a little bit heavier in the past. Go ahead.
Oh, good evening. Is this working now?
Maybe a little closer.
I don't think it's working. I'll speak up. How's this?
Can we hear?
Okay. Is that okay for you?
Go ahead.
Jeff will turn it on.
Third time's a charm.
We'll get it. Here we go. Yes. How's that?
There we go.
I'd like to sing my first song.
So you're crooning now.
So very briefly, there's another interested party. There's the City of DeKalb, and then we have an advisory committee, the Airport Advisory Board, which has been part of our city scene for well over a generation. And the development of the airport is the focus and heart and soul of that particular group. It consists of local people who have either been pilots or are interested in the scene at the airport. And they are also in favor of this. Their interests became a little keener about 10 years ago when the city was in a position to start working and investing with some federal grants and some state grants in the instrument of flying pertinences that are required at an airport so that it's not just for recreational flyers, which its principal customers are, but also we could be thinking more seriously about corporate traffic in and out. There's some freight traffic now, corporate freight that lands, smaller planes, not huge planes like at O'Hare and larger municipal airports. Well, anyway, that was the interest, and it's remained serious. But it's only been recently, maybe in the last four or five years, that we've had another level. We finally got, arrived, I guess, graduated into that level of instrumentation now that can attract regular flights by corporate flyers. Some are coming in to visit some of the larger warehouse operations that are in the city, or in Sycamore, or even in Genoa. And some are just flying in to check out the area. But a particular interest to us now in the last year has been the, and you've seen this a couple of times, the commitment to build a new business class hotel just about a half a mile north. Right now, there is not a place for snacks or anything. There will be hospitality section of the hotel, as you know, that will serve both sides of the hotel. So it's not going to be a sit-down meal kind of place. And we feel that's an opportunity for us. So these three acres that you've seen on the slide and you saw in your background might be able to support a couple of different uses, and one of those might possibly be a restaurant. At this point, we just wanted to get it entitled, so to speak. Now, the city can't sell this property. It would be in violation of our airport layout plan and land use plan, but we can do a ground lease there, and I don't like what happened. Say, Market Square, bigger example, but the owner, the developer basically, which would be the city here, sells ground leases or rents ground leases. So that's our intent. More to come. We'll keep you informed. We have a large pylon sign there now that is very suitable for advertising. But the next step, we've got a plat. The next step is to narrow down possible uses and consult with people who are in the business all the time about what might be the best way to approach this. Appreciate your support.
If there's anyone else that would like to speak to this matter, you can come forward now. If not, I'll close the public hearing and open it up to comments and questions from the commission.
Makes sense to me.
I'm all in. Yeah, I think supporting the airport would be wonderful. I would, I don't know if it's financially viable, but I'd love to see an airport-type restaurant similar to Clow or DuPage. But yeah, no, I think that's, I would love to see something interesting and exciting go there.
Let's wait until you say Hollow Garden. That seems to be the thing everybody wants.
I believe that's the stock answer, yes.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty underutilized area of the city, and it'd be nice to see it starting to kind of develop.
Yeah, with a hotel coming, you're gonna need something.
Yeah, it would be nice.
Absolutely.
And it's a commercial property. I think that'd make great sense.
Yeah.
Oh, cool.
Yes.
Just out of curiosity, how did the southern portion of that get paved?
Just recently?
Well, it just, I noticed that in the, in the plat, obviously, the concrete goes into the
What are you talking about?
Right there.
Platted area? Yeah, right there.
Oh, right there. Yeah. So there's a history. That location, you see the gray roof building? There's a little jog there. That's the original location of the fixed base operator. So the airport, business end of the airport used to be right there. So there was another, there were a couple of little hangar locations there. Those hangars are long gone. You can almost see the footprint of the old foundation there. They just poured concrete to get to wherever they needed to be. Yeah. It doesn't look like there's a grand plan for it.
True.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, then I will ask for a vote.
I'll make the motion. Based on the submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the City Council approval of the rezoning of the subject site at 2100 Pleasant Street as shown on the plat of survey dated 7/9/24 and labeled as Exhibit A, from the HI Heavy Industrial District to the GC General Commercial District.
So moved by O'Flaherty. May I have a second?
My second.
Seconded by Penny Graham. Could I have a roll call, please?
Becker?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Penny Graham?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. We'll be excited to see what comes of it. The second item we have is also a public hearing, a petition by the City of DeKalb for miscellaneous text amendments to Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance, UDO of the Municipal Code. Staff presentation or explanation?
Yes. This is a kind of, I've been working on this for several months, is kind of do these occasional miscellaneous amendments to the UDO text amendments as we, you know, look through the ordinance. We, you know, use actual petitions that come through. We kind of see applying the ordinance where the language is kind of off. So this is a amendment, it's kind of cleaning up existing language, changing the language to match current practices or policies that we're doing. One of them, the first one, is kind of feedback from the City Council and Commission regarding a special use permit. So I'll just run through these. You do have the specific marked-up changes in the packet, too.
I pulled it up.
The first, dealing with, if you recall, we've had a few of these duplexes that get, the owner wants to create a lot line down the common wall, rent it out, two units, put a line down the common wall, and then sell them. Fee simple. And that's allowed in the TFR, two family residential district, of course, and then it's also allowed in the RC1 district. We've had five of those since the 2018. So it requires special use permit. And there's seven criteria in the ordinance, too, that you have to meet with all of them in terms of minimum lot area, have to have separate utilities, and then you had to do a minor subdivision, a plat, platary subdivision to create to two lots. So what we're suggesting, and a few went through the commission, of course, and council, they're all unanimous recommendations and approvals by the council. It's kind of seen as a positive to have the ownership instead of the rental. So I think one of the council meetings, there was a comment about if we could make it a little more efficient process for applicant instead of doing the special use, which requires a hearing, filing fee, $500. And then we had the plat, too. So what's proposed, the language is removes the special use permit, keeps the plat process there because that's kind of needed for our ordinance and state law, but removes the special use permit. So it should be, somebody wanted to do it, should be a little quicker. No filing fee, no hearing, which requires 14 days at least, get a notice and do all the mailing. Prior to that date, the plat can be, there's no hearing, so we can, if the plat's ready, we can stick it on an agenda fairly quick. So that's a recommendation. Those seven conditions stay the same. There's no change to that. Those we want to keep. So they would apply. So any plat, you'd still see the plat, it would just be the resubdivision, not a special use or anything. So that's Article 5, the one change, one of the changes there. Also, the planned development district, the PDC, Planned Development Commercial. Currently only dwelling units are allowed above the ground level, when there's a permitted use on the first floor or the ground level floor. The amendment would allow dwelling units on a ground floor. We had a recent rezoning of South Fourth Street that was kind of unusual, had a commercial building and two existing homes. So there was some language in the UDO about exceptions. I kind of use that. But what I'm proposing is language that's a little more specific and will make it clear that you can have and request an exemption. Exception can be granted, allow these ground-level dwelling units in the PDC district. I don't think it will come up too many times. It's kind of unusual site, but we thought we'd get the language in there to allow that. We really don't have a mixed-use zoning district, per se, that has, you know, commercial and residential. We use the PDC or R, and then you can, most of those mixed use have had apartments above the ground level that have come into the city in recent years. So that's one of the changes. And the final one in Article 5 is the language for sketch plan. It's called in the UDO. We've been calling it a concept plan. It's a little more common use. That's where somebody can come in and just submit a sketch plan, a concept plan, get feedback from the commission. There's no yes or no officially. So we just changed the terminology there, and we did add language about the, we felt it's needed to provide a courtesy mailing to surrounding property owners. And we've done that on some recent sketch plans, or pretty much made it routine to do that. Didn't really have in the language, but we've added in. So, and then at least 10 days prior, it's not official public hearing, but give some timeframe to get a courtesy letter out, just to get some feedback from surrounding owners. So those are the changes in Article 5. If there's not any questions, I can go on to Article 13, signs. A few there. One is the, in the Central Business District, for real estate signs, we have some standards. Pretty much commercially, you can go up to 100 square feet. We felt in the CBD district, a 50-square foot would be adequate. Of course, everything is much more condensed in the CBD. Some, most of it doesn't have green area around the building to put a sign. So most of these signs are going to be on the building. But we feel 50 square feet is adequate to advertise a property for sale and lease. We're proposing an amendment to the maximum height for a ground sign for a building with two tenants, from 30 feet down to 20 feet. So we have the maximum height for a sign with one tenant, 10-foot high, 50 square feet. And then three or more tenants, you're going to have it up to 30 feet in height. And somehow in the past, for two tenants, it was also 30 feet. We think it should be 20. So the ratio is even throughout there. So that's the one change there, and that certainly makes sense, I think. 20 foot's adequate for two tenants. Language proposed for larger buildings, and we've got definitely a few recently in the southeast part of the city, Long I-88, these larger distribution centers, warehouses. These are temporary signs. We're talking about for buildings over 500,000 square feet. We allow one square foot per linio foot of building frontage with a maximum 500 square feet. So it allows a little bit larger temporary sign for these larger buildings. They're still going to be in proportion to the size of the building. They're so large. So we don't think this will be an issue. And again, temporary signs can be displayed for 90 days. They're not permanent, but 90 days. That's the same for any temporary sign commercial. So no change there. Just accommodating these larger buildings. The next one is a, on signs. We do allow, speaking of I-88, signs within a certain area between Fairview, Gerla Road, and areas on the, pretty much Peace Road and Annie Glynn. You can have taller signs, 35 feet in height, 100 square feet. We haven't had any in the last, recently, five, six years. All the new uses down there, if they've had something, it's just been a wall sign. They're not, you know, needing all that. But some uses, truck stop location, or some of the use may want a higher sign because of the higher speeds, of course, on 88. So, but right now, there's a certain distance. Long Peace Road is kind of the boundary. I just copied an area. This is 88 here, Fairview, and Gerla. So it's pretty much this area here. You can have the higher signs. So along Peace Road, which is right here, the current language has 1,320 feet east of the center line of Peace Road. That only gets us about halfway through the Golden Property, which we just annexed last year and approved a concept plan for. So what I'm proposing is to change that language to 7,000 feet east of the center line of Peace Road. That takes us out to the, our boundary agreement line with Cortland. So that will kind of cover in the future for allowing these higher signs. It's just an update, kind of, we're expanding in that area, so make the regulations expand, too. Not touching the area west of Annie Glynn with the distance. I think that was around 1,300, or 1,150 feet. We'll just keep that. That's kind of the, goes out to this lot line here. So we're not anticipating annexing any further west at this stage. So that's the change there. We do have a little change for minimum size sign for ground signs, smaller ground signs that are 12 square feet or less, or six feet in height. We do require for all signs, basically, the way the current language is to have a skirting or solid base around these signs. These smaller signs, that looks kind of odd, or kind of not really needed because they're so small. It's really meant for the larger signs to get up, so you don't have pole signs. But for these smaller signs, so it's any sign 12 square feet or less, or six feet in height or less, you don't have to have that if you choose to. So that came up on a couple situations, I believe, in the past years. Finally, with signs, we have, if you look in the language, it's quite long, regarding allowing off-site signs. In certain situations, right now, we don't allow them. You can't have a sign advertising your business off your lot. And planned developments, we do allow that because it's all under one ordinance. So the big shopping centers, they have these higher, you know, multi-tenant signs that the sign is on a lot that some of the businesses that are in the shopping center don't own, but it's covered, controlled under one ordinance, planned development. So not referring to this, these are just ones in, this kind of came up, and in the audience is Michelle Brokop from, that came in that owns a repair autumn, not automobile, I guess, alternator repairs, generator repairs, called Mars. It's 1827 East Lincoln Highway. I thought the best way to show this, instead of language, is the actual example. They used to be located on South First Street and Harvester, unincorporated DeKalb County, now in the city. And they own this lot back here. Here's the building. But you can see there's a separate lot here. There's a lot line. They don't own that. That is owned by, now it's Lovett's, towing. And they do have an easement across there for access. And they also have, I believe, rights to put up a sign there, but it is still off-site. So the language I tried to put together, I tried to make it as short as possible, but it was a little hard, would allow, if you're in this situation where you don't have frontage on a public roadway, you can have a off-site sign on the lot that provides access to your lot. So it pretty much would allow a sign on this property. And it's pretty narrow here. I'm not sure if they're, they haven't put a sign up. There's a temporary sign they got that we're allowing, you know, due to the situation. So would allow a sign up to 24 square feet and six feet in height, about half of what we allow for standard sign, 50 square feet, 10-foot in height. So allow some type of identification, people in there. Or if there's not room to put on lot, your, the language allows you could use that square footage and put it on a existing sign on one of the properties adjacent to this lot that provides access. So I think the applicant's working with this owner here. It's GR's Plumbing. Hasn't got that approval, but again, this is a text amendment, so affects the whole city. This is one example where it came up, to give you kind of a good way to see. I don't think there's too many of these situations in the city that I've run across. It was kind of unusual, and I'm not sure of it. Got to that where they had ownership, then lost it, their access, ownership of the piece to the main street there. But they do have rights to access it and rights for a sign on there, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So that's what the language allows. It also dictates, if you do this, the owner of the property has no street frontage. You got to provide proof you have the ability to place a sign on that property and have the rights to do so, or written approval from the adjacent property owner. So you got to show us the, you have the right to do this from the owner, whatever. But we think this is a pretty good solution to this situation. Will allow visibility for a business that doesn't really have the legal ability to do such. And there also requires a, the building's got to be at least 100 feet away from the main road. And they're quite a ways back there, so obviously can't be seen from Lincoln Highway. So that's the proposed long language there, but that covers pretty much what I described there. Yeah, Michelle's can certainly answer any questions you may have. But I've been keeping her updated. Send her to the language and let her know about this meeting if she wanted to come to it. So if there's no questions on signs, I can move to the next one.
Aye, Tony Everly.
Okay.
Welcome.
Yep, makes sense.
Article 14 is permits. This is just updating language to kind of meet current practices for special use permits in terms of what the department does and what the applicant does. We do the mailing now. We also, you know, put its signs up on a site. So we change that language to dictate that we can put a sign up. We're not required, but we're doing it in every situation. There's no deposit on signs. There used to be, so we took that language out. So just updating current practices and applying it to the UDO for special use permits. No really change in anything significant there. Same for the most part on Article 18, appeals and variances. Making sure the variance procedure with the hearing matches kind of the practice in terms of who does the mailing, the notice when it goes out. The one change we did make was the period that a variance is valid. Currently, right now, it's only six months. So it's kind of short. So you have six months, the time it's approved till the time you can get a permit for it. And most of the time, that shouldn't be an issue. We've had one where they got an extension because the variance expired. It was a gas station at 175 West Lincoln Highway, the Shell. And I think they got approval like late in the year, and they just didn't think of, over the winter, getting ready for a permit. So we're suggesting that be extended to one year. The reason there is a timeframe is situations in a neighborhood, characteristics in a neighborhood may change, and we don't want to, you know, approve a variance and it's valid for 10 years. And then they actually built the thing in eight years, and the whole neighborhood's changed, and the variance probably doesn't match then, or doesn't work. So gives them a year. That's a fair enough time to get, pull up permit for the work. And then our building department has the requirements for, once a permit's issued, and for how long you can build it, and they can give extensions. So we think that's pretty fair to give, add a little time to it. I don't have any issues with it.
When I read that, my brain right away went to the Shell.
Yeah.
It's got to be.
They didn't change anything. It just expired. They didn't catch it, and we had them go through that again. So.
Just in terms of the verbiage, does it need to be designated that it's not an electronic sign in any specific area? And the other reason I ask that is because obviously, we've had a lot more come through lately, so I wouldn't want anyone to be confused saying they could...
You're talking about back on the signs?
Yeah, and I don't mean to jump back on you, but I did have
Well, that's fine. The one we were Well, that's fine, the one we were talking about, that situation?
Correct.
The off-site. Yeah, I didn't think of that. If that's something where you don't want to have them be electronic reader board signs, we can add that language.
I think it's, we can continue through, but I think it's something worth discussing when we close the public...
Yeah, this particular one, they're not requesting that.
Obviously not, yeah. No, I just, it dawned on me, though, because again, I know some people are opposed to them, and so, you know, we don't necessarily want a neon billboard going down Lincoln Highway, but I don't, again, I don't know if, if anyone were to call us a task and say, it matches the requirements you didn't mention, whether it was electronic or not.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea to prohibit electronic reader board for these type of off-site signs.
Yeah, without approval.
Yeah. So, you can add that in the motion, when do we get to that, so?
Well, yeah, it's always the one to ask you, too. I'm sorry, continue, Dan, I didn't mean to jump back.
Oh, no problem. So, that's the big change with variances, giving a one-year timeframe to be valid. And the last one is the amendments for rezoning amendments or text amendments, too. And we did add some, we never, didn't have any criteria for text amendments, like we're going through now, in terms of any criteria. So, I did add some, I looked at a few other communities. So, we just added, when you look at text amendments, is it consistent with the city's comprehensive plan? Does it meet the intent and purpose of the UDO? Whether the proposed amendment corrects an error, omission, adds clarification to existing requirements, kind of like we're doing now. Is it more workable than existing texts? Does it reflect a change in policy? That's kind of what we're dealing with now, so. And then, does it create a lot of nonconformities? We've got to kind of watch that if we're changing regulations, and then there's a bunch of nonconforming structures or whatever. So, there's a few findings that will kind of help guide text amendments, that we'll put in staff reports in the future on, on those. So, that was the only significant change there. The others were, again, more of the, using current practices into the language on procedures and process. So, that's the, I have a sample motion prepared before, I guess a motioner could do it after. My plan to do a, probably another miscellaneous amendments, maybe over the winter, perhaps, or where some others I was working on, this taking a little bit too long, so I just wanted to go forward with these. But we could look at, it's not in here, these amendments, but fences on corner lots. We've had a few variances this summer, and some in the past where we're granting variances. If we want to try to, it's going to be tricky, I don't know if we want to or not, put into language that will allow corner lots to have fences between the house and the street. Right now, we don't, based on, depends how high the sign is, what type of fence it is. But we could look at that, I don't know what the Commission's thoughts are on that, or any feedback. The variance does give us that site-by-site look at each situation, because there's a variety of circumstances in a neighborhood and what's next to a certain lot in terms of house, or where the house is, a garage, if there's a sidewalk or not. And we got another one, I think, coming up, where it's a corner lot where there is no sidewalk. So, there's some unique differences there between one where you do have a walk and people walking along it, and the distance between the property line and the edge of the street's a little bit different. So, I don't know if you had any thoughts of that, we can certainly look at that further, but would you like to keep what we have?
I would be all in favor of revisiting the code. However, I would say, just based on the amount of oddities that we've seen, I would say that it would almost have to be a case-by-case basis, because again, we're talking traffic studies, line of sight, streetlights, I, I, yeah, I mean...
We've seen some pretty unique-shaped lots.
It's, it's, there's, there's too many variables to, to honestly bother with.
The nature of the requests are the same.
Yeah.
But the properties themselves are vastly different.
Correct.
Yeah.
And we reduce the fee a few years back to, down to 100, and they have to pay for the notice, so we try and keep the cost down as much as we can.
I think it's just kind of a, yeah.
Yeah, okay, just kind of leave it, just go forward. So, so, the ones proposed, you're shown, there's a motion, and they're all shown in Exhibit A there for tonight, so.
Okay. Again, if anyone from the public would like to speak to this, if not, I will close the public hearing and open up to comments and suggestions.
Yeah, kudos for getting the work done.
I was going to say, thank you, Dan, for having the patience and the caffeine to work through this.
The hour, I spent like an hour and 10 minutes or so, going, oh, God, I find this tedious.
Yeah. Some are challenges to write, like off-site signs, you, yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, so that was really the only thing that I think we wanted to maybe change, add something to in the motion?
Yeah, like I said, I just, and I don't know whether it's an asterisk that every time you're using the word sign, unless it relates to an electronic sign, it's assumed not.
Well, you can just, whoever takes the motion, you can read it as-is, and then note that for off-site signs, proposed, there's no electronic reader board, and I'll put the language in.
Yeah.
Okay. If nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Okay.
You want to fingerprint, Trix?
Oh, I'm gonna squint. Thank you, though. Based on the submitted petition and testimony presented, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to the City Council approval of the text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance attached to the staff report as indicated in Exhibit A, with the addition of the restriction for off-site signs to not have electronic movable...
Illumi, I guess we could just say illuminated in general, couldn't we, or...
I think our official is electronic changeable...
Electronic changeable type.
Copy signs, yeah.
Copy signs.
Yes.
Nonstatic electronic signs.
Yeah.
Yes. Amen.
As John Adams was saying.
Oh, I had that language in as it's presented to the council in the ordinance.
So moved by O'Flaherty, may I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Becker, could I have a roll call, please?
Becker?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Pina Graham?
Yes.
Chair Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. And again, next time you go through it, we'll pitch in for more Starbucks. Staff reports?
Upcoming meeting, next meeting, October 7th. We have two hearings, one is NIU Center for Greek Life by the NIU Foundation, that's a northwest corner of Black Hawk and Hillcrest. City currently owns, they've submitted a petition to rezone the property as planned to PDC to accommodate the Center for Greek Life. There is also a public hearing that we got published this week, the mailing going out for DeKalb Township, their facility on South Forest Street. They want to add a storage shed in the back, and also a 8-foot fence along the west property line, which abuts up to residential development. The, due to residential development, there's like a 50, there is a 50-foot setback, and that building is going in, encroaching into that setback, so they need a couple of variances with the sign, the fence on the height. So, that's a hearing, that'll be October 7th also. Those will be the two hearings for that meeting. At the last council meeting, or where the Commission had something that you looked at before, they did approve on August 26th, the final development plan for the hotel on Peace Road that...
Excellent.
Talked a little bit about tonight. So, that was approved unanimously, of course, so.
Wonderful.
And I think he's looking to start to work in the fall here, and finishing up at about a year of the hotel.
Outstanding. Okay, does anyone else have anything to add? If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Becker, may I have a second?
My second.
Seconded by Pina Graham, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much.